I thank you all for coming along for this council meeting. And I'll start off with apologies for absence.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We have apologies from councillor Carmichael and councillor McMahon, councillor Christie, councillor Armstrong and all present.
Declarations of interest? Is there any declarations of interest? Town Rias announcements. The first thing I've got to say is, there were only two occasions that I was called up for last month. Last month I went to the coffee mornings for the catchgate and youth play partnership. And I attended carol service at Chilton?
Yeah.
Chilton. At Chilton, the Rias Carol Service at Chilton. So, otherwise, I've not had to go on at all. Now, just a reminder to everybody, because today is a vote on the precept etcetera, that any councillor who is in the Rias cannot vote on the precept. So just to remind, the town clerk has already reminded us previously, but I'm just bringing it to your notice, being a precept meeting this time. Next item is the public participation. Oh, sorry!
Could I just remind members that it is full council meeting? So please, unless you're able to wait until you're recognised by the mayor before you speak, please stand while speaking. Please set your phones to silent or switch them off. And we are recording the meeting, and I believe there are some members of the public recording the meeting. Your hands up if you're recording the meeting, please. Two members of the public recording the meeting, okay, thank you.
Now we come to public participation. There were no previous notices for any questions. Are there any questions from the public today? Now we go on to item five, the confirmation of minutes. To approve as a correct record and sign the minutes of the following meetings. The ordinary council meeting, which is the attachment A. Does anyone have anything to comment on these minutes? Minutes chair. Minutes of the other meetings.
Move the second.
Minutes of the other meetings. To receive the minutes of the following meetings. 12th December Projects and Initiatives, 13th December Finance and Governance, 9th of January Projects and Initiatives, and the 10th of January Finance and Governance.
I would just like to leave a comment about the 10th of January Finance and Governance minutes. Just at... The point about... Just with regards to when we're talking about the budget setting and the rationale behind that, I would just like to add in just another sentence to that. Just regarding the fact that, as well as the rationale that's already made, that we're looking at rebalancing the budget in order to give ourselves flexibility to stop focusing or refocusing on to frontline services. So as well as administration and data protection, that it was also about giving us some flexibility around rebalancing the budget focusing on frontline services. It would have had that aim.
We'll note that, but obviously it's going to come back to committee.
Yeah.
Minutes to be amended, I can note that, bring it back to committee.
Any other comments to be made? Shall we receive those minutes, please? Now there's item seven, which is accounts for payment and bank reconciliation.
Yes, Mr Mayor, obviously these would normally have been presented in finance in the future at the Christmas party. They weren't quite ready in time. So they should have gone to the last finance meeting. You all know it's a new attachment this month, which is the backsheets. Hopefully members have sort of seen the cashbook page and they can link the two together. Is that working okay, if it makes sense of that?
Yeah.
Are there any comments on the accounts, please? Can we move that they're accepted?
We need it to be approved.
Okay, can we approve them, please? Okay. Okay, can we note the bank reconciliation, please? We go on to the next item, which are the recommendations of the committee meetings. The Finance and Governance, Governance meeting. Recommended the budget and the staffing on items 10 and 13. Now we go to projects and initiatives. Since meeting held on the 20th of November, the Projects and Initiatives Committee has made the following recommendations. Environment and Clean-up Team, to bring it whole in-house.
Mr Mayor, I have had a query, a question from councillor Tully in relation to the environment and clean-up team. Unfortunately, I can't give him the answer in part A, because it's all tied up with the staff finishing in part B. So could I just recommend that we take further decision on that one until we've actually had that conversation in part B?
Is that all right?
So councillor Tully's a question, please.
Is that okay councillor Tully?
Yes, thanks.
Fine. Christmas events. Christmas events, any comments on that? Do we accept the recommendation? Prescares, the proposal put forward. Are we ready to accept that? Comms and Marketing Budgets. Do we accept that? And the STARS Youth and Community. That we recommend that the project be funded on 2018/19. 2018/19, is that okay?
Subject two.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, I just wanted to ask if anything had been more happened about A, that's all. Which is the bit where, there's nothing else just about to mention, just when I sort of...
The detailed activity plan?
Yeah.
Well, I haven't actually got anyone working on that, because we haven't agreed that's what we're going to do. So essentially, if council accepts that recommendation, then I'm going to get me with the STARS bringing it together and just tell them what we want to bring back to committee as well. If that's acceptable.
Yeah, so can I move the possible course?
Through you chair, I asked about the separate £15,000 that we were seeing, and I asked if there was a way we could perhaps link that into some specific mental health program for younger people. But some specialised, you know, within, I don't know, whoever decides to choose. But specific, I've been having a few conversations and it seems to be that there is a gap. You know, there's a space where we can do something.
Just to respond to councillor Nicholson, obviously councillor Nicholson weighed that point at the committee meeting. My understanding of the position is, is that although the £15,000 has been put into the budget against youth provision, general youth provision, I think the committee needs to sit down and decide what the criteria are to fit into that part. I think it's just at this point an allocation of money, we need to review what the criteria are going to be. That was my understanding, I don't have any others.
Are there any comments on what's been said?
I do think it's worth saying that when we have the presentation of the committee by the STARS project, there was a mental health element doing it. And we've been looking at a chat and chill session, and I think James answered through some of the volunteer work he's done through PACTA V, that the STARS youth project will already provide some service and making any specialist services provided by the council and others, if needs be. And I think the point of that, the strategic grand port, which we'll discuss as part of the budget setting, is that that will provide a dedicated fund for voluntary groups right across the Stanley area to access, to provide other activities in their localities. And in particular, you know, around school holiday activities, now the school clubs and that sort of thing, Chair.
Thank you. Any further comments on this? Okay. We have requested the councillor to recommend the committee and decide what to do. Can we say we accept all the five recommendations over them?
Two to five, one more.
Two to... okay.
We did discuss that one in part B.
Yeah, okay. We discussed one in part B from two to five, do we accept it?
Great, Chair.
Thank you. Could we ask for further and second for this, please? Okay, let's have a show of hands, please. We come to item nine now, which is Stanley in Bloom.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I think it's self-explanatory on the agenda exactly what members have been asked to consider here. Durham County Council, the Civic Pride team have for, I think, the last three years, certainly as long as I've been here, been working with groups in the community to enter the Northumbria in Bloom competition, standing entry. Obviously, some of the town council has had some participation in. I've been contacted by the Civic Pride team, saying that they are kind of moving their project on elsewhere and asking, inviting the town council to take over responsibility for entering the town in this competition. And they have offered, obviously, it says quite clearly on the agenda, what they're offering, support from the Civic Pride, Clean Green etcetera, etcetera. They've even offered to pay the entry fee, which is very generous. So really, this is just for, you know, councillors to make a decision on whether this is a project that they think they will take on in the future, so that we can build it into the plan.
Any comments on this, please? Are we seeing, sorry, Mark?
Mr Mayor, I've just found a clarification and then I'll just offer a bit of items. I think that Stanley Bloom's been really good for Stanley. It's been an excellent partnership between, obviously, the town council and Durham County Council. And a lot of work that councillor Carmichael's group's done as well in the chap school and all that interesting stuff. So definitely like the support, just I'm not quite clear what they're actually looking for us to do. Are they looking for us to provide the manpower to go out and work with groups? In addition to what they're going to do on their own? Are they looking for us to do back office functions, to sort of advertise it? And I just wouldn't think we deserve a bit more than that.
Essentially, the way that it's been run certainly the last couple of years is that the Civic Pride team have had an officer who's kind of been leading and coordinating. So it was Chris Heimann, you probably know, in the Civic Pride team, was the person that was talking to the community groups, looking, identifying the sites, liaising with the judges, raising the judging days, talking to everyone else that's participated to make sure that it gets cleaned up, tidied up, etcetera, etcetera. And I think what they're looking for us to do is take on that role. So I don't think it's going to be a huge kind of revenue budget thing, it'll be more of an officer time commitment. And so it'll be basically an STC officer leading that work, coordinating with Clean Green, coordinating Civic Pride, liaising with the judges, etcetera, etcetera. And we have helped, I mean, in previous years, we've, you know, we've arranged like a sort of little reception in this building for the judges from the K, and given them tea and cake and have a chat with them. So it's just about handholding the judges, arranging everything, coordinating the various services. So it's not something which will have a huge revenue budget implication, but it will have some officer time implication.
Second, please. Is that okay by everybody? Would you like a show of hands, please? Thank you. Right, we come to number 10. Budget and Precept, Part A. Councillor Marshall?
Mr Mayor, all right, I rise to speak on the budget.
Councillor Marshall, just half a second.
Can I just move, I have a name to vote on this, just sort of opening.
Is that okay? Name to vote, name to vote on this then, okay? So councillor Marshall?
No, any councillor is allowed to request a name to vote on any of these things.
Okay. Right, Mr Mayor, I rise to speak to the budget and precept report for the financial year 2018/2019. There shouldn't be any surprises in there, we've spent quite a few months now developing it. And it came out of the proposal that was accepted by the public, warmly greeted by the public in the way the voters. The pledges that were made, and the pledges in there follow on into the medium term plan. And the medium term plan's been discussed on numerous occasions now, in various meetings. So it's nothing that we don't know about, what the proposals are. The report from the clerk recommends an increase in the precept. If no increase is provided, then the ability to provide the improvement in the service we are planning would not be possible. And the unavoidable cost would be required to be found from savings. As any proposal of further reductions in the reserves would leave the council vulnerable. In 2012, the independents had 1.2 million in the reserves. Now this is 230,000 unallocated reserves. Can I ask, what have the public shown for the £1 million expenditure since then? Not very prudent. As the report points out, the local government pays settlement is 2%. The introduction of the Durham Living Wage for our lowest paid workers increases their pay by £1 per hour. The new general data protection regulations need to be implemented to ensure that we are compliant. And we haven't got any option about that. In addition, we need to find nearly £11,000 to pay for the by-election called for by the independents. What an opportunity missed to invest in our community. Labour won handsomely and James Cairns was elected. Mr Mayor, I formally move with the right reply that we increase this precept by 2.95%, as stated in the report. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Tully?
Mr Marshall?
Sorry, sorry, is this a point of order? Or is he rising to the second motion? Because we haven't got a motion on the floor yet.
Point of order. Right, right. Chairman, Mr Marshall, the term of independence did not call the election. It was the democratic right of the people of Stanley to have an election. And if you keep saying that, then I'm going to murder you as well, then. You keep saying that.
On the petition?
Besides the petition?
Yeah, on behalf, it wasn't the term of independence, it was on behalf of the people. It was on behalf of the people.
Mr Mayor, Mr Mayor, that's not true. He goes through with the case and presented the case.
Councillor Marshall, as for a point of order here, it's a disputation of an allegation made by councillor Marshall. So really, you should not have interrupted as a point of order. Please, let's run this proper. Is there a second into this motion, please? Councillor?
So following on from councillor David Marshall's comments, I would like to focus specifically on finance. It's safe to say there's been an awful lot of really good work done since this council was elected in dealing with regards to finances. The situation inherited wasn't a particularly clear one. And to find the true financial situation of Stanley Town Council was not easy, as costs won't be shown in a clear and simple way. All the innovation was provided, but by God, there was lots of it. And we found it very difficult without the analysis that goes alongside it to really understand what the clear picture was. And at this point, I'd like to thank councillor Carmichael, who isn't here, but also our own staff, and also in particular Susan, who've helped us get to the point now where there's some clarity about our finances. The financial picture that has been revealed isn't a particularly good one, with significant amounts of the council's funds being used to subsidise the running costs of the civic hall. And this subsidy has meant that frontline services have been neglected, which given the medium term plan that ways the council have developed, we find that unacceptable for our new council going forward. And through the work undertaken, we've been able to develop a good and balanced budget which rebalances these issues, putting back into frontline crucial services for our communities. So I'll happily second councillor David Marshall's proposal. And I actually urge all colleagues round to the table to support this budget, which is very clearly focused on the needs of all of our communities. Thank you.
Are there any further comments, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I need to, and I have tabled the document, which members are quite excited to write to speak to. Before a motion is made on the budget, I need to, I want it very clear. Unfortunately, I made a mistake in the copy of the draft budget, which I've sent out to you. If you have the draft budget in front of you, or you have access to a copy of it, on page three, which is the page where the precept is, where the number for the precept is, you will see that the number that's in the budget there for the precept is 692544. That's the wrong number, that's an incorrect number. And it's my fault, it's a drafting error. Obviously, this document I've tabled shows you what the numbers would be for a standard budget, a 1% increase, a 2% increase, and in fact, a 2.95% increase that is proposed. So the number which says 692544 should say 706256. That's a 2.95% increase. And where the extra money needs to go is on page five. Service end cost ever 300, environmental services. You'll see that we've got £25,000 in that budget line. The balance of what's missing should be in there. We'll, obviously, when we get into part B, we'll look at environmental services in more detail. And that was your question, councillor Tully, about the costing of environmental services. Basically, in this draft budget, the staffing costs for the environmental services team, so the two lads that work the groundworks, those staffing costs have been put onto the staffing cost line on page one of the budget. And what remains on that line is the rest of it at the moment. Because we've not made the final decision about whether we're going to come in-house or go in our house. But they've been separate because all the staff, it's in the report, which is in part B. So just to be clear, that's the year after. There should be £13,712 extra pounds on the precept line. And there should be the same number of extra pounds on the environmental services line. That's my mistake due to drafting, which I apologise to the councillor for. Hopefully, with that piece of paper, we explain it to you, that's cleared that up. The 2.95% increase would leave the precept of £706,256, which would equate to a bare D equivalent of £92.53. So just...
Any comments on this? Any comments?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I'm quite happy to make a comment, because I've written a couple of things down and we should appear. Because I'm looking at what we're talking about with the finance meeting. The buy-in here, the buy-in here, how it's going to pay an extra £1.77 a year, which make it easy maths, it's less than £18 a month for the 10 months you pay your council tax. And I already think that the £59 that I paid the Stanley Town Councils could value for money if you utilise the events that we're on, the things that we're already doing. And we're going to be doing a lot more than that with an extra £1.77. So I think it's good value for money. Just a couple of the things, got a bit of a list. We've got the community events we do, partly in the park, Armed Forces Day, things like that. We're going to be doing support for village halls. We're going to continue with our Fund and Advice Service, which is the envy of many people in the county, because it's got the three strands to it. We're going to become more involved in the planning, blight debate, that's where we are for it. We're going to try and get rid of empty buildings and we're going to work with the county council on that. We're going to have an expanded role for our environmental caretakers. We're going to reintroduce the neighbourhood warrants. We're going to work with Stanley AP to deliver increased value. So we're going to hopefully get more value for the money that we're putting in by doing, doing things for them and not treading on their toes. And we're going to, we'll be extending our youth funding to try and open multiple years, so they get a bit of certainty, so it's not just, you do something for a little while, then everything falls apart. And obviously, we're going to continue to support the village halls as well. So I think that it's been valued for money the whole time, but it's extra valued for money now. I think that my household's going to, you're going to get it £61.69 in the next financial year. That you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Kay?
I just want to say a couple of things around the youth provision. Stanley itself, we do have quite a lot of good youth groups and youth activities in the area. We've got the Packed House, they run the chat and chill, PACTA V. They've just started up a session on Monday night, we call it Space. We've got youth groups, Dennis and Stevens again, bringing in the youth brand, which is, we'll talk about why the criteria to meet them at later date. But then good activity terms, stuff to enter at Moore and Offeld Youth Group as well. I think supporting this budget will be able to get even more into there and make youth a priority for the Stanley area.
Councillor Johnson?
Councillor Jonathan?
Davison.
Davison, sorry. Start the phone, the advice show. And I think it's a marvelous thing, I'm still being able to support community advice, citizens' advice, welfare advice, which is held weekly within the venue. Also alongside that, we have Packed House, who has advice services and help for people. And I think everyone will agree that this is a much needed service in Stanley to help support the residents in the area. Thank you.
Councillor Kay?
I'd like to say I'm very pleased that Mark, I'm very pleased that Mark's happy. But you know, I'm a little bit unhappy as chair of project. One meeting you have to cancel, you have no business, is that right? You have no business, you have to cancel the meeting. Imagine not on project. If downstairs wasn't getting £3,000 a week subsidy, £3,000 a week, think about this. We could do a hell of a lot more, I mean, for Stanley and for the people of Stanley and all around the world. Not just in Stanley, so I'm thinking about that.
Thank you. Are there any further comments on this? Councillor Marshall?
There's a couple of things, and I don't want to, well, this is going to be political. But I think it's really important that some of the things I'm going to say are minuted, so they're in the public domain and they're out in the open. And then we can put them to bed and we can move on with the plan that we've produced. Now, I think it's safe to say that personally, I was very supportive of this council when we were walking the streets in the rain trying to get it settled. Even more so now, in the big world of the UBI council. It's important that we've got the town council to be able to pick up some of the slack, given the huge budget cuts that the county councils had. After a few years of watching the work of the town council in the background,
I'm, unlike Mark, not wholly happy that I'm getting value for money out of my council tax, I feel. And during the election campaign, I wasn't surprised to hear that those views were echoed by hundreds of residents who asked walk individually due to the campaign. So that was part of the reason why I wanted to stand, to try and support and share some of my experiences with the council to get some leadership in. And I'm very pleased that I was successful in the election and I'm very proud to be a Stanley Town councillor now. But since May, we've begun the hard work of unpicking the finances of the council, the way the council's operated, and then try and put in place a plan that was quite eloquently put by Constable David Marshall earlier, that the public had supported. To my shock and horror, some of the things that we've uncovered since we came in are nothing short of scandals. The allocation of taxpayers' money over recent years is an absolute disgrace, in my opinion. And I think that there's a couple of things that I want to get at the minute of the meeting. Okay, so all this is true, it can all be backed up with reports from the council's own finance officer. So nothing I'm saying is fake news or made up or lies. But it's raised some serious concerns about some of the financial controls of this council and a distinct lack of leadership over the past few years. So I want to start with the chairman's social fund. The chairman of this council has had a budget that's been allocated over recent years on buffets and piss-ups for councillors, council money being spent on alcohol and buffets after council meetings. That's in the finance report presented and provided by our own finance officer. We've had it used to fund what I would class as key election projects in independent target wards around the piece. Again, this is all on record. This budget was solely at the discretion of the chair. And unless it was illegal for a council to use the money on these things, there's nothing our staff team internally could have done to stop it, unless it was illegal. Okay, so this was purely at the discretion of the then-chairman, councillor Nicholson. Okay, and I want that on record. These things have been solely approved by the... Money to fund buffets at a horticultural show that had already had significant money provided by this council. It's in the paperwork that's been provided by this council's finance officer. And in my view, money to refurbish this building that was allocated by members without going through formal council process. If you go back through the minutes, you can see that some of the refurbishments on this case were reported retrospectively back into the council, moving to budgets. I want to pick up on the £11,000 or just short of £10,900 bill that Stanley Town Council has just received for the by-election that was held within weeks of the main elections in May. And as colleagues might remember, this was following the sudden tragic death of councillor Waverley. Weeks earlier, he got in with a resounding victory in a ward that's been a same Labour seat for years in Stanley. So it was submitted by not somebody who lives in the community of that ward, not somebody who's been born there or brought up in East Stanley. It was submitted by a Durham City Independent councillor living in Tanfield, instigated and submitted by councillor Tully. Please move on that. Proof's on the election petition that was submitted to Durham County council to call the election. The petition was submitted by David Tully. Okay, so this has cost us another £11,000 that is a council we could have allocated to frontline community services. Again, a complete waste of money in a safe Labour ward where, again, we had a resounding victory and James was successfully elected. I also want to talk about the civic hall, because we've had 50% of the council's budgets, approximately, going into the civic hall. The biggest white elephant ever. Plough money in, plough money in, plough money in. Majority of the council's budget going into this place, money stripped from frontline services over the years by scrapping neighbourhood warden services because the town council and the independents on the council couldn't reach an agreement with the county council, pulled the services without any idea about how they were going to backfill those services. And then what did we see? You know, despite pleas from members of the Labour Party and Labour county councillors to sit down and enter into a dialogue, there was a letter sent to this council and to the chairman of the council at the time, to that effect. What did we see? We saw real people from the Stanley area, we saw their lives deteriorate because we had more dog fowling, more fly tipping and more rubbish. How on earth are people made to be proud of where they live, when they're living in that sort of environment? Because of the independent run Stanley Town Council. We've had budgets on this place spiral out of control, no financial controls in them. Staff members in here spending money well above and beyond what was actually allocated for projects. No checks and balances, no figures back to the ready of your committees. Not one question raised in a meeting about numbers or attendances or value for money for the residents of Stanley of the money that's been thrown in to this place, mind. Absolutely disgusting. So I'm proud to say that the Labour-controlled Stanley Town Council has put forward a plan. A plan that was endorsed by the public inmate, but a plan that links to the consultation that the Durham City Independents did in 2016, that nearly 500 residents from Stanley bothered to return and reply to, but nothing was really done with it. So I'm pleased that the priorities, every one of the priorities that we're going to spend taxpayers' money on links in to the feedback we received from our community. This is a council that's now engaging with our public and the residents that we're elected to represent. And this is a council that, in my opinion, is now going to make sure that we deliver value for money for the taxpayer from Stanley. So at the next election, when I'm knocking on people's doors, people say, "Yes, the town council have really improved the environment I live." The town council have made sure that my kids have got someone to go on a weekend. The town council made sure there was advice services provided in Stanley, where when I was in trouble and I was really at the bottom and I needed help and support, that I could access on my doorstep in Stanley. And I'm looking forward to somebody telling us that the town council, you know, that they really understand that the town council's providing value money for money for them. Because I'm confident that by the time we get in the next election, with this longer term plan that we're putting in place and with some changes that we've already instigated through the great work that Jeanette and David have done in reviewing policies and putting that in, that we'll be able to reconnect with the communities that we're elected to serve in the first place. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Constable Tally?
Good, Chair. Constable Marshall, the only reason I signed that form is because I was the one that took it down and presented it to Lady Twill. And she had her signature. That was it. It was called by the candidate, I signed it, history. Can you just prove that? That I called the election? That we all see that I called the election? Because according to electoral services, down to county all, you know, I didn't.
Are there any further comments on this? We are asked to consider, to decide the level of precept required for the financial year.
Mr Mayor, if Constable David Marshall has moved 2.95% increase in the precept, and I think Constable Stephen's in second in that motion. So there is a motion to consider. Unless someone wishes to move an amendment, then there's a motion to consider.
Are we in favour of this? Can I have a show of hands for the motion please? Okay, sorry, my fault. It's a name board. Those in favour, please raise your hands.
Do you want to keep them up? They don't have to. And to amber. So I'm right, okay?
Anyone?
Yep. Yes. So those against?
Those against please? Any abstentions? Any abstentions?
No.
Constable Marshall, David Marshall?
Yes, Chair, I'm pleased the motion's been passed and the public have received the services that we've gone forward with. It evases me that this opposition should vote against it. They've never read one objection, they've never put one proposal forward as to an alternative budget, and here we are, here we are, agreeing a budget. And I'm pleased that that motion has passed, thank you.
Constable Tally?
Sorry, Chair, what on your board, once the proposal, the motions are all right, reply after that. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, Chair. It's been under time for debate, my fault, you're right.
It's now the exclusion of the press and public.